Let me get the applicant. They're all.
Want to change it up a little bit? The agenda, they carry these guys, what comes up? Do we do that? Peter? And I can hear that.
You can do that. That's up to you.
They're in the building. They're just not installed.
Yes. Unless you're not ready, we can go get the first one. No, that's fine. So I'm trying to save you some time. Luke Michaels with Michael's Proms. So we have a lot, one lot in literary lane, which we are trying to put in a small basement and a dry well to flex storm water for the rear of the property. There were some grade changes to the site with house elevations, septic system locations, other existing homes that are there with fences and pools and whatnot. As the way of our previous range paths, we have to create area from where to go, which would be a small dry well in the back left-hand corner of lot number two. So in order to install that, we want to add an easement on that left-hand side of the property. So the HOA can access that dry well for future maintenance. All the stormwater areas in literary are maintained by homeowners association. Homeowners association setup, we're already containing these. So this would just be a small addition. You, I love small man, please possibly let me know where box two.
I gave you.
No, I have a map. I just can't tell where it's located.
Slot number two, John.
You have another section. So that's down far end? Because you said the low end, I'm like, okay, that's the high end. Lot two. Okay, here we go. Lot two is.
So are you taking this lot out or just adding two?
Yep, the lot is staying. You just want to add the gates of the law along the left-hand side of that property. And the dry well will be located in the back left-hand there, that square area. Yep, and that will collect all the water from this lot as well as the lot next door.
Yeah, I think there was a pool installed too, right? That affected the grade.
Yeah, so where the water was originally intended to go, there's now fencing, a garden, a pool, and other issues in the way, septic systems. It's a private, private house.
Yeah, that's what's happening. We have an occurrence of this elsewhere. We have this occurrence of this elsewhere in this same subdivision. Lot owners or homeowners are literally undertaking improvements. They own the lot before the subdivision ends.
All right, but if there's a stormwater system, all right, system, obviously. Some of them are just grass sways.
Yep.
It's put in to act as a stormwater for the development. It should be on the deed that that area is restricted for revision, right? Yeah, so this would be a private property in a lot of cases. You can see on that map, that's great enough. Lot three drains over lot two, and lot two drains over lot one. This is why I'm asking is because going forward in the future, what I'm getting the feeling here is if somebody sets up something like you have here, lot three drains to two and then to one, then we can expect that this is not, it absolutely should be reviewed for additional permits that might be happening, whether it's a pool or things like that, since you've taken it into consideration. So at that point, it's a homeowner submitting for those improvements and not the development.
Correct.
Okay, so when the homeowner came in for a permit for a swimming pool, what you're saying is the building inspector didn't look at the site plan and say, oh, you can't do that there because that's part of the stormwater. Oh, I'm not necessarily saying that, but there are things in the way there. And I think the water could potentially still get there for the most part, but I think this is just a blind precaution in case the water can't get there or in case it's wet conditions and things are frozen and it's not working. For the record, I'm not concerned. I appreciate what you're doing there. I don't have a problem. But like, we had another development in front of us, someone to treat the water off of some of the buildings with these low, low spots in the backyard. I mentioned it at that time, was to keep the homeowners from saying, hey, I don't like that white spot. Just fill it in. And they were like, oh, no, it's part of the site plan. You're telling me is that that doesn't really restrict that? Like, you're saying, oh, they have no control over it, right? Okay. I wouldn't have that, but once the property is transferred, I have, I have no right or approval. I understand.
Well, there is kind of an interim period in this subdivision in this right now. There is a subdivision-wide swift, you know?
Right, of course.
Permanent, and it's open. And it stays open until a notice of termination is issued. Notice of termination is not issued until the final lot is sold and the soils are stabilized.
So to me, then, that means the developer still has an overbearing responsibility to the stormwater systems being operated.
No, but it's a permit though, because a permit stays with the lot, not the development.
Okay.
Well, the permit?
The permit, stormwater.
Yes.
Yeah, so that stays with the lot.
Yes. Did, I think, to me, in one of this.
Yeah, this is in a usual situation. In this case, what we want to do is establish easement.
See, to me, in my opinion, this is a weakness in the system. The homeowner's not at fault. You know, nobody's at fault. It just, there's no way to accommodate, you know, this kind of an occurrence. Somebody put the pool in on property they own.
And wasn't the homeowner's going to act like a court or was it just trying to?
Uh, the association?
Yeah.
Well, the association is in place right now. We're, we're still managing the HOA, but eventually people will turn over everything in the HOA and they'll manage it. They're not going to be, but they're not going to be managing this stormwater system on private properties.
Correct.
They only manage the part that's in the HOA own preference. That's correct. So what I'm trying to get a grip on here is, do we need to, in the future, ask a developer to put a deed restriction on the deed before it's sold and said, there's certain areas on your lot that you can't do something with without? Well, I, I would say maybe, but also what could happen is if there is a permit for a fence or a pool or something like that, it should be recognized that this area is involved with stormwater, the drainage plant. And if a pool is put in, then arrangements need to be made for drainage to work around.
Right.
Something like that.
That's correct.
So is it? Exactly.
Has lots who already been sold?
Yes, it has.
Are these people aware of this?
Yes, yes, they are. We've had a meeting on site and wanted to.
Matter of fact, they want it, Mike, because they want to get rid of the pond now.
So is that, was that part of the building process that they, that you think we're going to change around here?
Yes, it's, yes, it's part of the plan of CEO. We have a temporary CEO of property. And so we can have this straightened out and Sam can finish, then we.
So it was captured, that's why it's here.
Yeah.
I have a question for Mr. Martin. I heard that this going to, what proposal is going to affect stormwater. Has this gone back to consultant as a necessary back to consultant review?
It has not gone back to the consultant, in my opinion, just my opinion. You're, you're obviously free to do what you want. I don't think it needs to go back to a consultant. I think this is a relatively, you know, minor change. It did rise to the level of coming back to the board for your approval because we are changing the plan, but I don't think it rises to the further level to have reverse review.
We're changing something, right, in years of review. I don't know if I necessarily agree with that.
If you don't, that's fine.
No, we go to our professional end of affairs and then we come back here to the board. It's like, you said, no, we don't agree with that. I think, I think this should probably be brought back to them, in my opinion.
Everybody's being watched.
I'm hoping the motion is.
Motion has been made to resubmit stormwater to our consultants review due to the line of change. Do the motion, go ahead, second. No, second motion, motion does. Can any else want to know what?
Question, the applicant, this doesn't, this change doesn't in any way affect any other parts of the stormwater control system? No, no, it doesn't affect any other stormwater ponds, management, anything like that. It's specifically for any water sitting in this backyard. And in the access ways that the HOA can service it, so the HOA is going to own the, the system and not the land. Correct.
Any other stipulations? Here's that, a motion has been made to approve the change to one of very subdivision. Do the motion, go ahead, second.
I'll second for discussion.
Motion has been made, you second, you run a discussion?
Sure.
Okay.
So I'm still trying to wrap my head around this a little bit. So what you're telling me is if we prove this tonight, it's still not fine. Is there anything to keep the homeowner on lot number two from building a fence that blocks the access for the HOA to get to the new revised stormwater system that would block by somebody else putting a pool where they shouldn't have? Well, I think that tonight with putting an easement on the property, we established that in this core access, should the HOA or need access over that, there should be arrangements, whether it be if it's a fence, be it a gate, or in the case of you to be able to gain access through it. The HOA is going to have a right to access. The easement is on the deed.
Yes.
This will be, that's all I needed, no?
Yep.
Or you can go, go to discussion. All is better, I?
I.
Approve one abstention. Motion carries, and I have. How many, four more?
Four, one.
What's your? Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? Sir, I'm trying to, we have no luck.
Good evening. My name is Ray Happy. I appreciate you setting aside some time for us this evening. We were here in September at Destin, we suspended our application for a project to construct a carbon fertilizer production facility in the industrial park in Monroe. We are back here in front of you this November with an updated, I will say, pretty darn close to final site plan. You're also in receipt of our D E C term applications for air and solid waste handling. Just for awareness, I have a few folks who are enjoying here tonight. In case questions come up that would be better filled about that, we have John Munter under enterprise in case we have any construction or instructional ability or site development related questions. John can be very helpful with that. We have Charles Dumas, our attorney. And we have also with us Chad Stewart from 3G Architects. So we have the designer of the facility here from Nice Falls together. I'd like to turn it over first to Matt Huntington. He's going to be with landscape architect and take you through our updated site plan. We'll go from there. Before we get into that, I guess I would love to ask if you have any additional questions or anything. I'll be sure that we got.
Good evening, Matt. I was down there, you get very clear in the site plan. I'll give you today, layout plan, ready plan. Purple site plan of the stand remains very similar to the last iteration where trucks and vehicles that are currently be entered into site here. Truck scale, central location here that vehicles can get by either side of it. That's the way in. Trucks will not go around the rear of the building. Your delivery trucks will by a solid material go on the rear of the building and then pull into a seating in this area. So the majority of the truck circulation is through here. They pull in here, they reverse that in here, and they come back out. Most of the passenger car circulation for employees and visitors will use this employee lot over here and then they'll certainly back out this way. Lower over here, you can see it is just a, it's going to be that. Oh, it's not a part of major circulation. Currently, there's municipal sewer water on site that we planned to access. That's part of the port. It's disrupted, well utilized, and stormwater perspective of the site was rented and divided into a few local areas. So that's just on the rear building here. All the stormwater for the one through one, your storm and. Great self-service, there's in traders here and here. Those are solar waters that I have on the site where this is like sandy soil. Our water was like up to 10 feet or so. It's right inside the building. Very simple stormwater plan. And then the front of the building, that's just a trading base. Control all our post-development stormwater flows equal to a less than what's existing out there. Which again, as I said, would be same soils there. It's almost difficult to make a plot on the site. So from that perspective, you know, we pretty much handled everything in there then. And, you know, you guys get everything site question wise.
Why, why does that gravel road in that?
This road right here, this is a twelve-foot wide access road. It's not meant for, you know, traffic circulation, certainly the.
I was, I was just thinking, ingress, egress with fire apparatus if we had to get around the backside of that or something.
Yeah, sir. Okay. There's a lot of fraternity that are around.
Okay, so it would be a good base on the road and stuff like?
Oh, yeah. I mean, it's going to be gravel.
Oh, no, well, yeah, yeah, I think that. Yeah, yeah, good, that would be great. Is there going to be any hiders around the backside of that?
Currently, we don't have any hiders on site, so that's something that hasn't been better all the way yet. Fire departments get no, neither do I. Plus, we are on road.
Yeah, yeah.
For a max, yeah, that's right.
Okay, yeah. So you had to, either them or the fire.
Yeah, sir. And the fire will.
Okay.
You show a faint circle on the west side of the building. Is that, is that where the stack is? Is there a stack?
These are storm silos.
No, not them. There's another circle shown to the right of those silos. Is that where the?
This area? Yeah, that must be it. Right here, also there are gas. Most of the salt in this area is all material storage for.
Is there a stack?
Yeah.
Yes.
How tall?
The building height is about 45 feet. The stack will come out above that and the bottom height may be above the. Currently, we have a, the spirt of the model is 75 foot tall stack.
Okay.
It's strictly a 100 foot stack, you're not getting one.
Correct. Is that going to be offensive in the, in terms of things?
Yeah, and right now, this is actually retaining all that kind of enclosed this area because the, this portion of the one's a little bit higher. So access back here clearly owns the for employees or, you know, maybe it's vehicles. Calling in here, there's no, you have visitors back this. So what kind of, you're going to have it open just to the one?
Yes, back in this area, that's correct. Other agencies are involved in licensing on some of our projects.
That's a lot to turn back it later to. Right for me, oh, licensing, I can't remember. So just D E C for environmental permits. The town row, obviously, for a site plan approval. And that's it. Obviously, we'll be talking with fire. Be sure we have that covered. We need to make sure that this sewer district that we're going to work with can handle the effluent. There will be no surprises there.
Shouldn't be a problem. And the effluent that's entering the sewer, there's nothing in that that can be an issue as far as feeding back into the sewer system. Obviously, you're taking stuff.
Correct. That's where it came from. I'm going to recite that.
Minus.
That's right, yeah.
I asked you last time, I'm sorry.
We also have registered fertilizer. We say, we have registered fertilizer, also fertilizer itself.
Does that register with D E C, right?
Yeah, there's also the E C O, get officially used determination on the fertilizer itself.
Well, then you're getting away to where I was. What is the nutrient content account expected? I know, it depends on the source of the dirt, but.
Five, five, ten ones of the ice, posture, possible passing. But there's also my personal things as well.
Got three of my questions. Good job.
How long does it take to get these permits?
I'm sorry.
How long does it take to get these D E C permits?
Well, now, that's an interesting question. So we had a productive meeting with Region Five last week, and the review of our application so far seems very favorable. We received a notice of incomplete application already, which is unusually fast, like the day after our meeting, which we were all kind of surprised. And the only thing requested in it is that they will need the town's secret determination. And it sounds like, of course, I can't speak for them, but that's it. That's the gating item. So actually, one of our asks here today, my understanding is that, you know, normally in planning work kind of issues a site plan approval on a secret determination, maybe in the same breath, so to speak, in light of the D E C's letter, which I provided to Jim. Perhaps that's not one of the answers of plans standing in future supply. Necessary that they can done at the same time, so that would perhaps be.
And most of the environmental risks, they would be applications. So as I mentioned, the D E C part of it. It's also required for application, so the engineering report, facility manual, the air models and all that. But they also need, secret has to be closed for them to have a complete application because they don't want to do their technical review and issue permits for something that hasn't completed secretly. So as, we, the agency being the planning board, the only item in their, in those to complete was a secret determination. And once they have that, it'll be completed in their, in their administrative process. And they'll proceed to the technical review, and that technical review typically takes typically anywhere like up to six months, based on this meeting that we had. They said, and with the notice, we only have one item, possibly a two to three month window for issuing a permit. And then issuing the permits would be conditioned on actual site plan approval. So because this isn't the industrial park that I've removed the sharing environmental back statement, that was developed as, as thresholds and did the initial baseline reviews. It's our, it's our opinion that there's enough information that's been submitted that the board could make its secret determination. Or there's additional information we'd ask for, what would be to do that ahead of the site plan?
Or any questions?
Who has oversight after approval, after the, the facility goes into production? You talk about, you talk about D E C for permitting. Is D E C going to come in and do tests, oversight for our site?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll expand on that. So, so, for example, like the air permit. As submitted, we, we submitted for the full proposed build out. It's a free line facility, I'm proposing the new free lines, but it's going to be built sequentially, one, two, three lines. So as, as submitted, the full build out is below the thresholds of a major facility, what they call a major facility in terms of air emissions. They did have a level of comfort that it's going to be built sequentially. Because right now, the emission models are based on bench scale, that's laboratory data modeling. So once the first line is built, there are going to be permit finishes for actual stack testing to verify those, those emission factors that were used from the models. And since the full build out was projected to be below major facility thresholds, certainly one line is going to be well below major facility thresholds, and then those, those emission factors can be verified. And tweaks need to be made to ensure that when those are two in grades, they blow major facility thresholds. D E C is going to have involvement, all permits, air permit and solid waste permit at permit terms. Typically, they issue those for five or 10-year permit terms that have to be reviewed and then renewed as this permit terms. In between those times, any, any substantive change or proposed change to the facility has to get approved by the D E C. So they're not going to be approved and go away with the agency.
Correct.
They're going to have, they tend to put more restrictions at first, and then once they gain a level of confidence, so they might not, they might require stats, that testing every year, the first five years, and then once they get a level of comfort that it's consistent, they might back off every other year, every third year, something like that. But they're going to be involved, you know, consistently.
Okay, thank you.
So we left all this in August. They were to be on the September agenda, and they asked for, you know, removal. But at the August meeting, we did do the, we did authorize a coordinated review, and the letters did go out. We had sent the D E C, D O T, Saratoga County Planning, County I D A, and the city of Glens Falls. So there were, we had five agencies we reached out to. I think, if memory serves, the only two I got back were the D E C and D O T consenting to the agent request. So, yeah, and we haven't done a public hearing yet. We've, you're announced it in doing that.
Trying to wrap my head around the fire issue. It sounded like you guys were looking for seeker as quick as possible in order to get it to the.
I didn't mean to intimate that we're in a rush. All I'm saying was that if this even happens. It's just that they don't necessarily need to be issued at the same time. It would be helpful to tackle it, whatever your timeframe is, of course. That said, tonight would be fine.
Well, I'm just saying, I mean, time so yes, it's, I'm just trying to wrap my head around the sequence we have.
Sure.
I would say this, and I don't know if this. It's hard, it's hard to figure out how to word this. I'll blurb it right down, I'll say it. I think that if we were not to do a public hearing on this, we would probably wish we did.
Our tag always has been, we'll go in here, like, different than this one, we will.
Yeah, that's kind of, I think that that's a given. With that said, that affects our, our timing and seeker.
Sure.
So.
Yeah, and the 30 days is certainly fast. And then I think we have a, if you're considering December, I think we have a placeholder for the P U D on Route Nine.
Yes.
At the first time slot that we typically do, I think it's 7:01 for the, for the December meeting. But other than that, we have no other public.
I think we have another one from last week.
Oh, that's right, you're, yes, you're, you're correct, we do. Oh, that's right, you're, yes, you're, you're correct, we do.
Yeah. The other question I have is, is stormwater from this project gone out to the town?
No, I, and the only thing holding it up is the, the seat of the funds for the S F. You know, I think they might have to mail, but I don't.
They should be received by now.
Okay, yeah, I haven't been in since, uh, Thursday, so.
It's probably here.
It's probably here. So, if that's the case, then it's just a matter of the, the account will be established, and I can send it off to the, uh, engineer tomorrow.
So, what's your feel? Would that be back in time for a public hearing next month?
Yeah, typically, in that first comment letter, we get those within two or three weeks after the, the, um, you know, the material is mailed off.
Okay.
Can we have a couple of meetings next month and schedule a public hearing before the Monday?
Um, and we, yeah, you could, just to let you know how it works, we typically wait to see how many applications come in on the first Monday, and then that dictates, you know, the need for, you know, a second meeting. But it's been pretty busy, we got a lot of things in the hopper still, so, um, I think it's a better chance than not that we're going to have two meetings, but that's just a guess.
Well, that would be favorable tonight to schedule a public hearing before the Monday.
Um.
Let's see here.
This, this one account, today's, we have a meeting on the 13th, gonna go one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. Why would I have to have a notice off by here? Because we'd have to have the notices to the paper on, uh, December 3rd. So, yeah, that could be done.
How's the board feel about that?
Why, why would we do? Or you can do the 27th, the 2nd, instead of the 4th.
I'm just taking Christmas.
Is that because of the holiday?
Yeah, 27th, but I don't, I don't have a lot of people here. I know you won't see me, so, 27th. I don't know, it's, 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 it's Christmas weekend, so, probably you gotta go on a review either, right?
Oh, we'll make her Saturday, I'll go.
I, I assume she'll go earlier.
Yeah, we got the Harrison Avenue Apartments at 706 on the 25th.
So, if we were to schedule that for the 13th, that's the end here, we definitely have to get on. Be sure we can have those comments back. I mean, as it is, the comments may come back with, with discrepancies and corrections that we made, and then we'd have to move. But, I mean.
So, we're gonna have three public hearings on the 20th?
Not the first time this happened, though.
And two of them are likely to have a whole lot of public. But, I mean, with, in all honesty, in this particular project, I'm not sure how much of the public is public and project related, so.
And so, once you get bottom down, I mean, we got all this stuff coming, Jim, I think the 13th would be.
Twenty one?
If I now want something, I'm motioning over a public hearing on the 13th.
Motion to have a, to a, a, a public hearing for Saratoga, um, on the 13th, do I have a second?
I'll make a second, but what's the time?
Seven oh one P M would be available that. That would make them first on the agenda.
Motion to make a second for the discussion.
The only other thing I would, um, usually, that, that would be a special meeting that night, because your regular meeting is the 20th, so you'd have to also. Correct. Just point that out.
Now, for the discussion, I don't think this is really too controversial, something, right? Opposed? Abstention? Motion here. Okay, now I have one on the Housekeeping there to do, since we're in this case, we're going to do a meeting in that meeting, and a motion to hold a special meeting on the 13th.
I'll make a motion to hold a special meeting on December 13th. Seven P M.
What is been made to hold a special meeting on the 13th due to the anticipated amount of applications, we see, the motion, do I have a second? My, what's your, do I have a second for the discussion? Again, I don't think that was controversial, so is the right? Opposed? Abstention? Motion here.
Don't drive so many cars for the next one, Steve.
Sorry.
Don't drive so many cars for the next one, Steve.
We also might have fun with this, but.
I saw a parking lot, and I swore I missed a public hearing. I just wanted to be sure we could answer any questions, like, well, we have the. Thank you so much, so happy Thanksgiving, appreciate it.
Yeah, we can, that door can be shut.
Okay, I'm Joe Anvil with the Environmental Science Partnership. We're on behalf of Serone Builders. They're advertising for a 30,000 square foot light industrial building to be located on this lot 21 of otherwise known as, and just two through six. Two through six of, um, corporate circle, again, within industrial park, Armor Road. Uh, just to let everyone know where we're looking, uh, we're literally at, we, two lots immediately south of the previous application that we just ordered for, Armor Road stands from Bloomberg Road down to the industrial park. We're looking at this parcel here, um, to develop for our light industrial building. Projects within the M one zone, uh, the use associated with this building is a, uh, canvas growing facility, which is a light industrial use, and has been determined on previous applications when we were trying to consider C one zone, that this is allowable use within the zone under site plan. Um, the existing lot generally was forest, I believe some of those trees are down, this is image from 2018. Uh, we haven't, uh, completed nothing in survey, but, uh, in general, the site is relatively flat, excellent sandy soils. Site plan, uh, so we're looking to propose a 30,000 square foot building just oriented toward, north is now two feet left, as opposed to the previous view when north was up. Um, so, along the top of the screen, continuing in north-south direction is Armor Road, corporate circle, is the cul-de-sac of come off of Armor Road for fine access to our lots. We're looking at developing one of those lots, 2.7 roughly for parcel. Uh, 30,000 square foot building, 45, 50 apartment spaces. Off of corporate place, you have tractor-trailer delivery access to rear of the building, as well as our, uh, trash enclosures and service areas. The building will be serviced by municipal sewer, municipal water. Stormwater management, uh, will be managed either onsite with onsite water quality, and then contribute to a combined off-site system that was developed for the industrial park, for this land, also industrial park. Uh, trying to get clarification on the original approvals, exactly how those numbers work together, but certainly as we progress these plans and we give forward them to, uh, the bird for their engineering stormwater review, that will certainly be done out in, in town and to the bird. Again, I believe this is a, a fairly straightforward application, and it is a light industrial building, meaning steps, light industrial park. This is where town is promoting this type of use, this type of facility. Uh, so, rooms aware, it had proposed this out on Route Nine, amongst other mixed use. Uh, we are allowed to clear the board's opinion of this use on that property, and I think it was even suggested by several members, go to the industrial park, that's where we want it. So, found a piece of land in the industrial park. We're proposing the identical use, identical building at this location. Uh, we're here tonight to start the, uh, site plan review process. Uh, I will say the plans are very preliminary at this stage, as we want to get some feedback from board on what studies, if any additional studies are going to be needed. Uh, this land that we are looking at was part of a previous secret determination for the, uh, expansion of the Merle industrial parks, so things like traffic, sewer, water usage. Uh, we're all looked at at that point in time. Uh, I think we will find, as we move forward, we're going to be within, within the, uh, standards that were set by that secret determination. And I'm sure this board can go through and either make a new secret determination, or find that it's aligned with the original, uh, secret determination, uh, once we get there. I know we've got to go through some bench areas, public hearings, and all, all the good stuff like that, but unput that out on the table. So, we're here tonight to address any questions or concerns the board may have, uh, so we can continue. Thank you.
I'm confused where to slide. Are they, is it forming in the existing road right now?
Yes.
A little bit.
They're at the, they're the, yeah, who's gonna put in the road, Joe?
That's my question.
This is the existing road ends here in the cul-de-sac.
That's actually in?
Correct, go back, road ends here, the road will have to be extended, uh, at least down to the new cul-de-sac. Um, that's something we're working out with the current property owner, um, exactly how that road is going to be put in. Certainly, this project will have to pay for a portion of that road, with logistics of that, um, are being worked out. There is a design for that road with stormwater management, uh, that's already built and approved, you know, basically a phase grant, so doesn't require any additional review, it's just going to require a construction permit and oversight by the town for the installation of that road. But the, we assume it will have to be put in as part of this project.
Okay, all right.
We're prior to this project.
Yeah, so we're gonna need approval for the water sewer, all that, that would be extended to.
That is already part of the road extension. The water sewer was getting extended, um, as part of that. And my understanding that the sewer and water usage within this area has already been approved by the town for the industrial park. Again, something we've got to go through and, uh, confirm, but, uh, there should be very, uh, little requests or any, or there should not be any requests for extension of water districts and sewer districts. That was all done on our previous.
Yeah, you guys part of the district, just that that put in.
Correct.
Right, you, you don't have any exceptional water needs for this, you know, outside of, you know.
Now, we're running like 3,000 gallons a day for stored water, which is.
Yeah, that's minimal.
Yeah.
It's equivalent to ten houses.
Okay.
So, which is consistent with the.
I was just curious, I, I was looking at it, and I'm looking at it here, and I'm like.
Any road?
Yeah, any road, okay, yeah.
Any road, and, you know, who, who work out logistics?
Yeah, right, right, right.
So, I had a note from my previous review of this, um, map, and what you just said contradicted what I figured, so I might want to ask you this. You're expecting to take tractor-trailer deliveries to your shipping and receiving entrance?
Um, it is accommodated. Typically, we would not have anything more than like a 30-foot box truck.
I mean, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna argue right now that design as it exists is not accommodated for tractor-trails. That's why I was asking. The, the design of the hammerhead and all, unless you're planning up, backing them off of corporate place?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that is a, it's, it's an industrial park road, I assume that you could pull up and back in off of that low low user road, low used user road.
So, when they do the road, Joe, are you gonna do both legs of the cul-de-sac there?
Uh, and again, that's something we might have to work out. You may put in a temporary road until the rest of the park completely, these four lots get developed. Um, there's, there's potential that this use could expand and not file four lots over time, and that road would never need to be built.
I see.
So, I don't know, we don't want to go and build everything at that cul-de-sac at this time, just enough to get us in and out of it.
So, it's gonna be right next to the biochar?
No.
I think there's one lot.
No, there are one lot removed. He's got the, they're up in, um.
And you're there.
There.
Sure enough.
Yes.
Right, right with that, or they.
Yes, no, right, right where your pen is, yeah.
Okay, so they're right at the cul-de-sac.
Correct.
Right before the pump station. Okay, because there's, that's where that road goes to the side here, I believe, huh?
Actually, if you recall, Mike, the, the road that's going in the biochar is also the, the side road for the, um, solar driveway for the solar.
Right.
Yeah.
That's why I just don't know about this on the road right now, but, like, he said, because, yeah.
You know, ideally for the property owner, the bio cell and the light industrial building go in, and that entire industrial park starts taking off, and user after user in there, and all things built on and stuff.
Yeah.
I think that's good for the owners, good for the town, good for the entire area.
So, right now, the town, town does have all those lots, correct?
No, with, I think the town-owned lot, or the, basically, the upper right-hand corner, there's a couple, I think.
Okay.
Up in that, up in that area is town-owned, but the rest is owned by an L L C.
But it's still part of the industrial park.
Correct.
Correct, okay.
Is that traffic info available from the G I S numbers?
Yep, it's, it was all mine, yep.
Yes.
I, I don't, I, I probably have to go down the archives to pull it out, but I know it's done.
Because all of a sudden, the solar companies, they have users, but they're gonna have.
I, I think, I think with the two uses that are proposed so far, you know, well, that certainly the solar ray is the third, but the two active ones in terms of actually having, you know, some regular traffic, I think they're well within parameters there. Yep, we'll get to that.
Yeah, certainly, we're pride for generation, we'll make sure we're consistent here.
Why so many parking spaces?
Um, we're, we're figuring during, uh, shift change, uh, we could have the person for 40 to 45 people, or 20, or so people working the facility at one time during shift change operations.
So, you're thinking two shifts or three?
Boyer, without, or, good man, doubt.
The town went to down.
The question was two, three shifts, uh, two shifts.
I think it's, I think it's ideal. It's a win-win for the town because Saron is still interested in the Route 9 site and they're exploring other options there as I understand it. But yet, we do retain this business that was planned for there in the industrial park where it's tricky.
It's what they were so branded was made for, the, the, I granted to build that industrial park, drive it out.
Yes. It's a, it's a good employment, you know, regenerator.
I was going to say, what are you thinking for security, like fencing?
There's, yeah, there's, well, the laws are going to write that for us whether or not, whether outdoor cams are involved with it, meaning on the quarter of the property. Some, I know Massachusetts has that, but it's, it's sized as like a medical facility. And you can't be out of sight of two cams. So at all times, you have to be able to get caught by two cams in hot direction.
But you'll have, you're not going to have a gate, a bad gate to go through?
Um, no, no, it just, so good a question though, because no, the facilities that I've visited were not gated. Some of them, whenever they were up against whatever neighborhood property that may have been here, I don't know, bike paths or something like that were.
Could you state your name for that? Because I don't have the recording.
Anthony Strong.
So they, they know when she goes to do the type.
Because I went back there today. And I'm from Nashville and ETP, which is very relevant.
How do we know?
There's like several links that lead to that association, so.
But I could very well be written into New York State's law to be obligated on this with co-op access.
Yeah, just something to think about because.
We need it just for ourselves, sort of.
Yeah.
So yeah, I think that's, you know.
Well, you have a lot of, you have a few people, security people there 24/7, I believe, correct?
I don't know about that. No, I mean, I don't know about security, there being a security guard. I just think that that's the basis for the entire site being cameras. Every vehicle that leaves a ship, it's GPS tracked with a tracer car.
Have you been to Chester County?
I'm sorry?
Have you been to Chester County?
Did he take?
He did.
Yeah. It's impressive.
Yes.
So I have a list to the south of your proposed site that says off-site stormwater management area. Explain that.
So this is something we are trying to get better understanding on is this is designed as part of this phase of the industrial park to take runoff from the roads. And my understanding is from the lots. However, we may need to treat water quality volume on our own lots before it's added into the combined system for the road. This is designed, we did not design it as part of what was designed in the previous groups.
And it's on another lot.
Correct.
And it's all, and it's also several generations ago of the regs.
Right. So that's, I mean, I don't mind if that's part of the plan for the park. It's just it's not somebody else's lot.
Correct.
Sooner or later, somebody might want to develop that and they're going to have the stormwater.
I gotta note that this was approved as part of.
So that leads me to my next question. You said for some reason, this is a shadow of the past that goes away. Do you have a room on your site to treat the stormwater from your project on your own site?
Yes, we do have, we have a room on the site to deal with all of our own stormwater.
Yeah, there's a lot better than this giant piece of this way of thinking.
Right, but it is approved and that's why I'm saying typically what we do when we have these large combined basins, we come in under the new regs. We have to do all of the water quality treatment on our property and then it will all discharge to a larger basin. That's typically how those regulations fit together.
And I'll just make a statement based on my previous question for you 20 minutes ago. I don't know that I'm super comfortable with the concept of planning the back trucks on off the road. I know it's an industrial park, it's not Route 9, I get that. But for very little bit of design, you could put a turnaround in there or you could pull a tractor-trailer and back it up to the loading thing and pull up. Now, does it mean you have to put it in now? You said right now you're looking at 30-foot trucks. You could always put in a little line that says proposed, you know, addition of tractor-trailers become, you know what I mean? So right now, you're probably right, it's no big deal. But if those other three lots develop, then all of a sudden you have 50 or 60 cars coming in for people coming to work and all that, tractor-trailer back and there might not be such a great plan.
So it's a cost, I'm not saying a cost analysis, but it's also, it's an analysis of do we want the initial impervious area on the site creating an even more stormwater management for the purpose of maneuvering tractor-trailers onsite.
You're talking about, you're talking about a patch of asphalt about 20 feet long.
It's 20 feet wide by 120 feet long in order to make that in the core to accommodate a tractor-trailer turning. It's actually quite a large area. It's something we can look at. We can accommodate it. I was trying to reduce impervious on the site so that we could use other existing impervious. I know I've been in super urban areas and do a lot of, say, town center type of redevelopments where you have a significant amount of restaurants and those restaurants are being serviced right from the main thoroughfares or backing in through drive-throughs off of the main road in order to be able to.
And the truck driver and the people in the car waiting for them love for their better plan. Okay, so this is the reason I'm bringing it up now is because this is ink on paper. And it's so much easier to name. Like I said, I think the only one that's concerned is Trump, Jack. If I am, then that's good for you, okay? I'm just saying that I would be, even if my concern does prevail, I'd be happy with just a note on the map that says this could be used for in the future.
Can I jump in on that a little bit? This is just my experience in, in, you know, around industrial parks and everything. That's the reason you develop like they are and you find a lot of tractor-trailers. That's, that's what they do is they use the road to back in there because it's an industrial park. It's not a, not a residential area. I know you know over, over to Johnstown, who's up in there and they're way down in the plaza. And there's buildings out there, tractor-trailers backing in and out, in and out, in and out. And if they see a car and they look to chase it right up, it's just like, get the hell out of here. You don't want your, for your work and that's what an industrial park is, you know? So I, I, I want to disagree with you, Joe, and I don't think it's something that's really needed because I think the roads are built for trucks to leave and out. That's, that's my opinion, so.
Yeah, then we have to look at, are we going to make provisions here for this applicant to the detriment of the other applicants that may have been coming along? We're going to look ahead and solve the problem for this, our hand.
I can say if you go to the guy's department, that requires graphics, ball metal, everything else. There's no trucks part backing in off of the main transportation roads. They pull into the fall, fall handling facility and they have a spot there that they back in from. So they get them off the main car. Now, like I said, right now it seems like a stupid argument. You look at the picture, it's a watch and truth, okay? But if those other three lots develop on that cul-de-sac, it could become a bit of an issue. I hope it becomes an issue. I have so many shipping and receiving that if it comes.
Great, we have a lot of them.
So all I'm asking is for provision on the site plan says if it's necessary, this is where it would go. And we could put it there, okay? And I'm sure you look like a natural engineer. I am sure that you can find a way to do that small cat stormwater management.
You can figure out.
We're in the road thing, you know, that has to be rid of the grass grown up in it and all of your old stuff, right?
I just didn't produce a lot of viewers for a tractor-trailer turnaround on terrible soils. I think it was the worst idea. DEC do it.
Yeah, so I mean, I'm not saying, I'm not saying it has to be drawn and shaded here. But you put a little dotted line that says if we did need, this is where it would go. And this is what we would have to do for stormwater to, you know, you can draw a little dotted line, stormwater treatment. For sure that says this would be for if we put it in. And until there's a development of those other three sites, as far as I'm concerned, you can back in off the road. But that way, if for some reason in the future it does become an issue, all right, it's our, the provisions are already there and it can be handled like that.
Yep, understood.
You would be proactive. Isn't that awesome?
Always driving, cutting edge.
Licensing on any of the exhaust options or anything? I asked the same question with the biochar facility. Do you have DEC permitting for air quality releases or anything like that?
No, as far as my understanding goes, it's still going to be, it's still to be written into the laws of New York State with these facilities as far as odor, are you talking about?
Odor or, I mean, any kind of, you said there's scrubbers for the odors. I meant any kind of exhaust that you're going to be admitting from the facility because it is a closed empire.
Yeah.
So.
No, that's what I, yells.
Okay.
What's the timing of the state?
They're saying it's still from now, like 12 months.
I heard the earliest was the fall, you know, a year.
Licensing?
Yeah, a year.
Um, Joe, to modify the stormwater, would you have to go to the town or is it the property owner? Do you know what, to move away from that?
I don't know the answer to that question. This is just an approved site plan where they could come and hold building permits tomorrow and build exactly what is on there. I don't know that the landowners would want to modify an approved plan in order to build. I don't know the answer to that. It's something we can investigate and I'm sure it's something that the Verge is going to make us follow current standards and as they existed then.
Yeah. Do you have to bring power down there when they do that?
Yeah. Have to bring out the utilities when they do the road.
Yeah, I think that would have vision to be underground power, right?
I believe the rest of the park is underground power now so far.
Is there an answer to that?
Don't know.
I don't know.
We have a development of a industrial park, so we do have.
And base towers?
Yes.
I'm going to try and pull the old GEIS on this that's down in the files. I've seen it. It's several hooks. I just got to see if it's there.
I love reading those.
Yeah, it's a good cure for insomnia.
Let's have a say.
Mostly growing things to be light, I don't know, maybe for heat or something like that.
I mean, you're, it's basically, you know, 30,000 square foot light industrial or black and brown. I mean, don't think of it as a specialized environment for the.
So are you on a, what's your time? Are you looking to advance on the preliminary next month? There's a month to follow or?
It's going to be more than, I mean, for two beautiful detailed plans, probably in like January.
Okay. Just for our general planning purposes.
I like the idea of creating jobs on there.
Absolutely.
No, I think this is, I think this is ideal. Two, two shifts of work.
I'd like to commend the applicant for taking that as for stuff to look into the potential to use the park. Doesn't mention, sometimes we, sometimes applicants get like, this is what we propose and then comes an argument instead of a process and it's.
You have temporary convictions. Yes, now it would be, it would be shame for this tenant to leave this town. Yeah, creating new jobs would be very.
There's no plan of that, right?
Uh, no.
No plan of the town to use that. No. No.
As long as we're taking more approvals and.
Anthony.
A lot of hate.
Spring 2022, would you start building without your license or would you leave?
Spring 22, yeah, I don't know if that's.
Yeah.
I, I don't know how you could in the event.
I'm just ready and I would love to, I mean, dropping the gun on that would be.
Yeah, that's a lot.
Could be so risky, so I don't think we would.
I don't know how you could do that without knowing all the requirements. Might get yourself in a lot.
But I do have.
Right.
It's a lot of usage, but I'd rather not, no.
No, yeah, there's a lot of infrastructure other than just the site plan.
Exactly.
Building roads that are previously.
Yeah, there's going to be a lot there now.
I mean, that could take a year itself to lay all seven of the grounds. I think if most should get the place pad ready, wait for the building permit to erect the building.
We've got a public area in the 13th that you want to come.
No.
I'd love to see that.
Excellent.
Okay.
As it will consist of the office and the garden park. We're going to ask you to get a contact statement for an update to make change to their plenty animals and plenty plants.
Okay.
Now, what I'm asking for a study, contact the animal manager. Stay or give.
That's the key shit, though. I don't think any, the historical stuff has happened since the report was done last time, so.
They should have a new disc.
You have to think of something moved it.
Certainly how advanced can you use biochar? They have, they're going with public area, so they have detailed plans.
So once they plan to start.
They're going to be a while, they're going to be a while. They, he indicated, he just indicated four to six months for a technical review of the air permit. So I think the earliest they could have air permit approval would be June or July.
I heard they want to sell you fertilizer.
I don't agree with you, they have tractor-trailers again.
But one of the things they have to do in their air permitting to get a complete application is to have seeker complete. So if the board does seeker next month, then they got a complete application and the time clock starts.
That's really almost.
It's going to be busy in Farmer Road, Farmer Road.
I think, I think the property owner there certainly has the equipment to do the work.
It's nice once they start going, you can continue pretty good.
They do, they do. Nice to see you.
I'm going to start quick. Do you have any other questions besides?
No, I think I'm all set. I think the board's looking for, looking forward to coming back.
Looking forward to hearing your hard time.
I don't know what I'm saying, Joe.
I mean, I'm. What you're. Yeah, I got it. But yeah, I was just, I mean, I was just thinking about it, like, well.
I don't think so. I think he's got a. Yeah. Somehow it is a product that's still, it's very, it's not very dynamic from what I understand. It's got nutritional value.
No.
Mr. Chairman, we want to learn that, are we a herd?
Yes, we're a herd.
Now, hey, you come back here, that was. Friday night, we went to work.
I can't do it on my IGS.